Tell me when.
You're on, ready when you are.
We good? Alright, this looks like the place to be on a Monday night in McGregor. I know we were also popular tonight. But it's good to have everybody here. So it's 6:35. We got a lot of things to cover tonight. As you probably see, the agenda is quite long. I know several of you here to speak about things. We'll give everybody that opportunity. I would ask that tonight, given the amount of topics on the agenda, and I see the number of people who have already spoken up, and we do have some public hearings, I will ask tonight that you try to limit your remarks to three minutes apiece. That's what we standard do. But we normally don't enforce that. But given the number of people and the number of agenda topics tonight, we'll probably keep that as close as possible. So, thank y'all for being here. With that, we will get started. If everybody would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, under the public comments, what we normally do is if there's a specific item you want to speak on, then if you'd like to, we'll hold your comments until that particular item. That way you can kind of hear what's going on. It may be a little more relevant for you. But if not, you're welcome to speak at this time too. So Norman Hammond, Mr. Hammond, I see that you've signed up for item number one, which is the consent?
About 10th Street.
10th Street. Wait, so you just have a regular remark to make? Is it something on the agenda?
No, it's not on the agenda. I just come to talk about.
That's perfect. And then you're welcome to, floor is yours, sir, so.
I'd just like to know when 10th Street's going to get fixed from all the potholes.
Yeah.
It's just getting worse. I've been here a little over 21 years, and it's just getting worse and worse every year.
So Norman, is that one that we have done yet? And it's suffering damage?
No, I got pictures of it if you'd like to.
We just hadn't got to. Yeah, so, there. Chad, you know anything about 10th Street?
That's, that's on the plan for this year. It is.
It is.
Yes, sir.
A lot of people have been talking about it.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
And I can tell you Norman, with the... I can tell you Norman, with the sun out now, we're gonna be blowing and going good. And I know we've gotten a lot of streets covered. And we'll get with Chad specifically. I'd kind of like to know where we are with that too. And from time to time, especially when Mr. Kilpatrick was here, before he passed, we would get an update every now and then. And so, I'm sure... So there you go. April 18th, we'll have an update on the street report.
Okay.
So we'll know a lot more in a couple of weeks, exactly where 10th Street stands. Okay?
Okay.
You bet. You bet. Uh, let's see. So let's run through the consent agenda then. That would be under item 1A, consider approving minutes of a regular council meeting held on March 14th, 2022. Those minutes were in the packet. And unlike some of the other prior minutes, we didn't have several to run through, just the one set. So, everybody have a chance to look at those? Are there any questions or comments about the prior minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 14th, 2022?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from March 14th, 2022.
There's a motion to second item 1A. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. To item two is McGregor Volunteer Fire Department to receive a drone donation from SpaceX. So I know tonight, we have some fire department. We've got our chief with us. And I know we've got some folks from SpaceX, Alma. We got Bobby over here with us. So Kevin, anything specific? We want to turn it over to them.
Alma, you want to come up and talk?
Bobby? Yeah, so, y'all introduce yourselves. These are the kind of what I call the head folks over at SpaceX.
Comes the crew.
Yep. These are the folks that I think a lot of things happened for us out there.
Yeah, just the specifics.
She's fixing to hand you that mic right there.
Alright. Just a little bit of specifics on what we were doing up here. So, we had a pretty significant grass fire at SpaceX. It's been a month or two ago. I don't remember the exact date at this point. But we had a pretty large grass fire, burned a couple hundred acres out at the SpaceX facility, unrelated to the testing activities that we were doing. But it did threaten several of our structures and some of the safety of the individuals on site. And McGregor Fire Department responded in earnest, along with several other responding agencies as well from the surrounding areas. And it was of great benefit to us. No significant loss that we incurred as a result of that, due to the efforts of the folks here. And during the time that they were out there, some of our security personnel, James Potter here runs the security team, had some drone assets that we keep on site for various activities that we were able to put up in the air, kind of scout the locations of the fires, some of the things that were hazardous that we need to stay away from, and where to position our personnel for maximum effectiveness. And Van Con point out, he's like, hey, this is actually really good capability. So James and the security team worked together with some of our partners down in South Texas to find some assets that we had at SpaceX put together. And then he's going to provide some training also for how to operate these things. And hopefully be an asset to any other unfortunate things that come up and hopefully have as fortunate of results as we did.
So Bobby, real quick, tell everybody who you are and what you do.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Sorry, I didn't introduce myself. My name's Bobby Peaton. I'm the site director at SpaceX. So more or less responsible for the operations of the 4400 acre facility that we also leased from the city and about 600 folks that we have out there. I got with me Sam Stedder Shroud, who runs our EHS department, Environmental Health and Safety, and James Potter here, who runs the security department, kind of took the lead on putting this whole package together. And Alma Santos, who does government affairs and public relations for us at SpaceX.
Great, great. So Marty, I'll tell you what, chief, you want to introduce your crew with you that got here tonight as well?
Most of y'all don't know me. My name is Marty Dominguez. I'm the fire chief for McGregor. Vance Smith is the president of the fire department. And Alfredo is my captain. And my training officer, Andrew Smith. So with this drone, it will be a big asset for us. So I'll have eyes in the skies like I know exactly where the fire's going, where it's traveling, where I can deploy the trucks to, a lot quicker and a lot safer. So we really appreciate this.
Can you show off the toy?
Yeah. So this is a Mavic 2 DJI drone. It'll take about 30 minutes flight time this thing. Legally under your license, you're able to go up to about 400 feet with it. But this particular platform, it will go higher than that, me too. So you can use that, as you mentioned, to observe anything in the area, look into any dangerous spots before you send your firefighters or anyone else. We'll happily provide some training here, but this is a device ready to go.
Fay, do you know how to operate one of those? Yeah, I figured you did. But look on this. Somebody will.
Yeah, so we're going to do some training. And in the near future, we can take this thing out of the fire department and we can cross train each other. And I'm very much looking forward to getting some files, your license, and trained up on your side. And then using this as a mechanism for us to increase training.
Well, let's just hope that we don't have to use it actually.
Yeah, it's a pretty useful thing. And I'll give you a rundown of all the different things you can do. But you can record video on this, still frames. It's a very handy little controller. The whole thing on this is modular, throw it in the back of your truck, on your cellphone, everything, even mirrors, all the charging devices. If you want like a bigger iPad, there's a controller in there. As well as kind of like a standard little iPhone to run it off of. Yeah, I look forward to this thing very personally. Very training with our team.
And look, I know they don't, I know they don't give this stuff away. Give us an idea of what y'all are donating to the city tonight, cost-wise, value-wise.
Uh, this?
And the gear with it, whatever is there.
Oh, the, all this stuff right here?
Yeah.
So this kit, if you were to purchase it, it would be about $2,500 bucks. And then, you know, there's some newer models and stuff like that out there. And then, but what you guys are doing and kind of starting off with the program, you know, this is an outstanding platform. This is kind of the standard, this DJI drone. And these kind of real compact little controllers. These are kind of the standard for a lot of EMS and law enforcement agencies that have programs for drones. There's a specific, we've picked out a fairly healthy program at SpaceX between here and the Brownsville site. And so we'll help get it set up. But there is some EMS resources, some law enforcement resources that you guys can get registered under, you know, to get some additional training capabilities to use this thing. About it?
Alright, great. That's it.
I'd like for you guys to take some pictures.
Yeah, let's get some pictures.
Yes. Y'all can squeeze in. Alright, everybody. City Council, y'all want to stand up? I might be able to get you in the background if you're okay with that.
Sure.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you.
Alright, thank you to SpaceX. And a special thanks to our volunteer fire department as always. I think y'all are going to have your hands full this summer and spring, so. Yeah, I know it.
It's a rain.
So on this topic, there's really nothing to do, but there were a couple of people that signed up. Michael Warden, Lance.
Wanted 3 and 2, sir.
Say again?
3 and 2, I mean 3 and 4, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I can comment on that. That's outstanding.
Alright. So you wanted 3 and 4?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, move it on. So let's do that. Let's move to item 3, which is to hold a public hearing on preliminary. Wait, Sherri, Ms. Chidowan?
Yes, sir.
You didn't sign up anything specifically? I don't want to pass you. Do you want to just make general comments or a specific item? Whatever you want to do.
Well, I'll go ahead and stand up.
You can do it.
You have to leave my microphone.
Microphone, yeah. So if you want to, you can talk about a specific item or something, and you just didn't want to pass you up.
Well, I already talked to the gentleman who's the developer of the parks 2, about that common area, that park as such, that is MEDC land, and what's going to happen with that. And you know, there is quite a bit that has to go into that. And not to mention expense. I would propose that the MEDC take care of that, not the city. Secondly, I would like the priority list on the streets. I would like to see the priority list on the streets. Some of these streets got cold seal method over four years ago, and they're already starting to fall apart. I mean, Google will tell you cold seal method is a precursor to asphalt. And none of them have been asphalted. And we're looking at asphalt on streets that don't even face houses. And I would also like to know, is the survey correct on the streets? Had they been surveyed? Are there survey markers? That's another issue. And I've seen some asphalted streets with the edges like this. We know that's not going to last. It's going to, it's going to erode. So honestly, we'd like to see, if you're going to put asphalt on a street, let's do it right. I would like to see the priority list. I think that's important to everyone here. Where does your street stand in getting fixed? And so, we need to, we need to focus that a little bit more. And there will be funds to handle it with the gigantic leap in appraisals this year. Yeah. As most of us know, we saw anywhere from 25 to 50% increase in appraisals. So taxes will go up. There will be tax revenue. And so there will be funds to allocate to streets. And that's what I got.
Thanks, Sherri. Okay. And yeah, like all of us, we'll look forward to seeing the street report in a couple of weeks. Uh, let's see. So let's get to this public hearing on preliminary layout designed for the parks subdivision Phase 2. So Mike, kind of set the stage for us, so everybody know what we are, public hearing on.
So mayor, members of council, anytime a subdivision comes into the city, proposed anything, we always have a preliminary plan of what it's going to look like. Before we go through the plating, the design phases, infrastructure, everything that attains to that, we've always brought y'all a proposal of what they would like it to look like, what's involved in it. And that's what this is, is just a preliminary layout of the lots, how many lots, what it's going to look like, as you see on the screen. That is Phase 2 of the parks subdivision. The property, see if it's in here. See if I can do this again right. There it is. So this right here, to your right-hand side, is Voslo, which is in the city of Waco. This is Highway 84 running across the top of the screen. Phase 1 sits right here. You can kind of see the corner of it. That's where Phase 1 ends currently. And then down here is the Wildflower subdivision that we have. So basically what this is, is it's just a preliminary layout to show you lots that he wants, that the developer would like to put in there, the number and all that. I have notes too, from the P&amp;Z meeting last Monday. So any comments that were made and stuff on it, I can address. And the developers here also.
So this is simply the layout at this point? How the lots are going to be shaped, sized? What are the size of these?
They're going to be a little bit bigger than what we, than what's currently there. There's approximately 209 lots in this, in this whole section altogether. What I call Phase 2.1, because I've been doing this so long, is the first section that this starts. And that's going to be these, there's 49 lots, if I'm not mistaken?
39.
39, right in this area that run pretty much this side of the street and then this little cul-de-sac and then this side. That'll be what's, and then, as you know, when they start developing it, they get that done so they can start building. And then as the developer's moving forward with his streets and his infrastructure, they're building houses here. So it's kind of a chain reaction and just following to get it complete.
Okay. And then we've seen talk about the blank space at the top.
Yeah, that's on item. That talks about, that's going to be item 5 and 6.
Okay. Alright. And Phase 1, although it's not all completely built out, or is Phase, is Phase 1?
It's, it's not 100%, but it's pretty close.
And how many houses do we have there now?
47.
45?
It's total 47 lots, and I think there's four that are not built, but I believe they may be permitted.
They're per, I know all but one's permitted.
Okay. So this one's going to be significantly bigger than Phase 1?
Yes. The first part of it will be about the same size as Phase 1 comparably. But then as it grows, it's going to be significantly bigger, guess me.
Alright, so before we open the public hearing then, the developer, you sir, have you signed up to speak?
No.
Well, I think we'd like to hear from you, since you are the developer out there. Give us an idea of what your plans are, so might give everybody an opportunity to speak a little bit.
Okay. My name is Sean Nelson. I'm the owner and developer of this property here, the parks, which is called Phase 2. And we kind of tried to stay with what was kind of concepted before on this, which is kind of the, you know, diagonal design there. And having a few meetings with the city and discussed that, we maybe want to put a little bigger lots on here. The home sizes are going to be between the 1800, the probably, you know, 2,500 range in there, to kind of keep consistent with what's going on in Phase 1. So it'll be minimum 1,800 square feet.
Are they going to be deed restricted that way?
Talking to the previous owner on Phase 1, he thought that there was some kind of homeowners association. But there is a deed restriction on the 1,800 square feet. So we carry those deed restrictions over into these single-family lots here. So the plan is to go forward with what's similar, what's there, maybe do some batting board mixture with rock and brick. Maybe not all 100% brick, but maybe put some different architecture stuff in there. But consistently come with what Phase 1 is product. That's the plan.
Alright, and what's your time for?
Depending on tonight, we'll go ahead and start submitting plans for either, you know, the first 39, or depending on the demand of, we've talked to a lot of people about this, some local folks, some other folks about, you know, wanting to take some lots down. I initially was going to build the houses, but I'm not.
You're going to ask, so you're going to sell the lots to developers? Is that how it's going to work?
Well, to home builders, I initially wasn't going to do that at all. But there's been some, you know, a lot of talk about, you know, some of the local folks here, and even some of the folks in Waco area, have opened up discussions with us. But I'm leaving it open. But again, it's deed restricted, and it's going to have to comply with what's there already, you know? Same look, same type of house.
And so you're also a home builder yourself?
I am, yes. We're from the Burnett Marble Falls area, just outside Austin.
Alright. Anything else you want to let us know?
I don't have any, but I'll answer any questions when people have any.
Alright, thank you. Okay, Mike, anything else we need to know before we open the public hearing?
There were some, there were some comments about the duplexes and apartments, but that kind of goes back to item 5 and 6. When we go to that one, it really doesn't pertain to this. There was a letter, that was an email that was sent out, asking about the park area and the MEDC. But I advised the planning and zoning commission mayor that that item was not on this agenda, so we couldn't even discuss that period. It was just a preliminary plat to look at it. Other than that, that was all, sir.
Okay, with that then, let's, I'll open the public hearing at 6:56. So anybody that wants to comment on what you see and what you've heard, you're welcome to do so. Public hearing's open. Yes, sir. Or ma'am, you're first. Go ahead. No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, we're in Phase 1. Our taxes went.
Can you tell us who you are?
Lovey Fitzpatrick, my husband.
Nice to meet you.
We're in Phase 1. Our taxes, what is this going to do to our tax? Because we were at 38, we're now at 7,000.
So...
And some of those homes don't look like our homes.
Yeah. Are you concerned your taxes are going to go up or go down?
Up somewhere.
But I mean appraised value, I mean appraised value of your home.
Yes.
Because some people say new development drives my property values down.
Well, no, because this is going to be a little away from my home. But I thought multifamily, I was thinking that was apartment.
Yeah, and that would, could potentially drive your home value down.
Down.
Yeah.
Which would be Phase 5 and 6, that you can write you down for it.
That's number 5 and 6 on the agenda.
So you want to move down to 5 and 6?
3, 4, 5 and 6.
3, 4, 5 and 6. Okay, so that's what I want to know. If it's going to be, apartments are going to be there somewhere. Because the reason why we moved there, because we have, our children are grown. And we know everybody there. And it was a small little division. And we're not in the country, but we're in the country. And we can still hear crickets. And we don't have all the traffic, you know, that goes through where we are. But now, listening to this, this is kind of scary.
So you're concerned about the number of houses? Or you're concerned about?
The number of houses and the traffic? Like, how is that traffic going to go? Like, how's it going to go to these other homes? Like, we're right on the corner. So everything would come through.
In Phase 1?
In Phase 1.
Do you want me to answer that? Yeah, sure, you bet. Absolutely, there's answers, questions.
So when this subdivision was all planned back, back in the day, Phase 1, when it came into play, TextDOT allowed them to have one entrance, which is on Cotton Belt, which is the way you currently come in. Once you get over 50 homes within that subdivision, TextDOT requires two entrances. Firecode also requires two entrances, in case something goes on. So if you look at this drawing, this right here, or this design, this right here comes out on 84. That is entrance number 2. The developer has had what they call a TIA. You'll hear that said probably on some other issues. That's a traffic analysis, traffic impact analysis that TextDOT does require. He has had one of those done. He talked about it at our last meeting we had last week. So the traffic will come in, they'll come in either way. And from our discussion at the planning and zoning commission, and from his report that he got from his engineer on the TIA, they're going to make him do an access point right here so they can come from either side of 84. Right here where it comes out. So this is Voslo. And this entrance right here will come out onto 84. But there will be a crossover to come in the main McGregor, or you can turn right and go to Waco.
Where is our entrance?
Currently, your entrance is sitting way over here on 5th and Parkway, somewhere back here.
You're saying our parks is down here.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it'd be way over the right-hand side.
Yeah, I get that, but it's way down here.
This, see this road right here? See this road that's going in right here? This is Edinburgh. This is the continuation of Edinburgh going into it. So Edinburgh ends right there into the grass ditch at the end of y'all's property.
So what would be the timeline for the new roads? And exactly where, would you start 84 and just go through this first loop? As the developers talking?
Okay. TextDOT's going to require, I mean, we want to do it anyway, but TextDOT's going to require us to come into 84.
So hang on, when you say up there, make sure we're all square what we're talking about.
Right here.
Okay, alright.
Right there.
And so, they're going to make us, and it looks like, the TIA is not complete yet. It's still in the process, but depending on what happens to that multifamily thing here. But there is a road cut there right now on 84. So you can kind of see where they line up. That, that road going out there is lined up.
It's one of their smooth road.
It's, there's already a cut in the center of the highway right there.
In the median.
So that's where that lines up at.
So are y'all going to bring trucks and things like that through our Edinburgh?
Our construction can be up at the top of there.
Alright, they won't come in.
I'm not saying everybody won't, but I mean, they're going to be advised to go up to the top and come through. So, I mean.
Because that's going to stick out.
But I don't predict everybody driving out this either. So I mean, we've done developments before where they said they're not going to use that road. First thing that happens is we have people going on a dirt road up to the highway up there, and first thing that happens is we have people going on a dirt road up to the highway up there, from the original subdivision, so try, you know? On the plans, they're showing the construction entrances, it's gonna be up top of there. So it can be one of those deals where the last thing we build is the color's going across-
Correct.
To get into Edinburgh.
That's what it'd be.
So they can't come in that way. They'll have to come to the top.
Yeah, I think that would be wise.
I live in a subdivision too, I don't like, I mean, building a house next to me, I don't-
Well, we're real small, we're not like-
Hey, listen, listen, we need to keep some order about the meeting. Listen, we need to keep some order about the meeting, so if you have, I see some hands raised, so I'll give everybody an opportunity to speak, okay?
Come to the mic.
Yep, and you'll need to come to the mic so everything can be recorded. So this gentleman right here has had his hand up for a while. And Ms. Fitzpatrick, is that right? Do you have any other comments for us?
Yeah, well, we built our home there, it was because we supposed to stay small. That's why we, that's why we built there. We were told that it was supposed to stay as many mailboxes as we have on it, which is about maybe twenty-five, thirty? Forty?
Forty, forty-seven.
Okay, so it's supposed to stay that small, but now it's sounding like-
Well, six, so all I know is when the city, when we were with the developers, six, seven years ago, however long ago that was, we knew there were different phases, that, for example, when all that land was sold, all the land around you that's now being laid out tonight, that's been sold by the original owner, four houses, way back then, it was just a matter of building one phase and another phase. So were you under the impression that that big pasture was just gonna remain a pasture forever?
No, I was under the impression that when they sold me my home, that it wouldn't be, that's what the builder told us.
We wouldn't be connected.
That we would not be connected.
Oh, so it's about the connection?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I'm confused of what the issue was. So it's the connection of Edinburgh on the bottom connecting one phase to the other phase?
Exactly. Cause see, right now, you can't go nowhere. We stop.
I understand, okay.
And everybody has to, we only have one way in.
So that's, that's the concern then, connecting, okay, all right.
Well, thank you. I don't know if I need this, Mike, I'm pretty loud, I'm Mike Warden, I live in the parks, I've been there a year. Now, I was aware that they were gonna do multiple phases, but we were also told that that was just gonna be our end, and then that there would be an entrance on the other side. So that is a, I'll tell you, if you, anybody that's been out to our area, forty-seven homes, this is the neatest place I've ever lived in my life. And I'll tell you, you open that up, and you get folks that are moved into two-hundred-something homes, and, and they, they hit me, they hit one of these kids, they hit my, my dog, you know? There's just gonna be multiple problems I don't think the city needs over there, you know? And listening to the builders talk, my home's thirty-nine hundred square feet, so it's not eighteen hundred square feet. So I am, I am worried about the, the value that the houses are selling for now, and then we build a bunch of homes over there that, that can hurt the value of my home. So that's one, and then I apologize for trying to read three, four, and five, but that big circle is the biggest piece that I have, cause I wanna talk about what research we've done and what kinda crime that's gonna bring to the area that I'm living in with my family right now. I've lived in apartments in the past, and went outside and had no windows in my car, and no stereo, and all that kinda good stuff, and, you know? The police have been very helpful when we need issues in our area, but they're not there all the time. So you open that up to much wider scale, definitely, I guess I can come back up when we talk about that. But that wasn't part, whenever I signed in, I knew there was gonna be other phases. We were told John Houston was gonna be in, I guess he's backed out, cause that's what I own, is a John Houston home. But definitely concerned about that. And then the last thing I'll leave you with, all this information, that all these folks that live around me, we didn't get any of this information. This wasn't sent to any of us. So we had to find out about this, and I don't think that that's right, that we, that we missed the first, I guess, there was a first meeting, and then if we didn't get together as a team, we wouldn't even have known this was going on tonight.
Somebody should have something on our door.
So, so, okay, so go ahead, hang on, his turn, his turn. So, so just to let all-
Thank you.
So just to let all of you know, when someone comes in to do a replat, a rezone, anything dealing with zoning in any city, it's not just McGregor, it's any city. State law requires that we notify a two-hundred-foot radius of everybody that's within two-hundred foot of that property got a letter. I know, I, I don't, okay, I understand that, let me-
I think there's one home that may, may be two-hundred feet from there, so that's, that's ridiculous.
That's just what state law is, he didn't make it. That's state law, and I don't control the law.
I agree with that, but this is McGregor, Texas, and we should take care of our folks.
We, we notify everything by the letter of the law and what was supposed to be done.
I hope that you come in and take care of us.
Look, we're gonna let everybody talk, but please hold the smart alec comments to yourself. We're gonna keep it courteous, professional, and make good decisions. Yes, sir, you in the back.
Good evening, I'm Stephen Fuel, I live in the parks as well. I, I knew that there was gonna be a phase two, but like he said, we weren't told that it would be coming through. And I guess, being a developer, I would, you know, if they are gonna come through there, what is the time limit that they're allowed to do construction in the morning? Cause I, with the house built next to me, they started pouring concrete at three-thirty in the morning, waking my kids up. That's a problem. My wife and I chose to build there on assumption that we got two young kids, and I want them to be in a small school, in a small town, and McGregor in particular, I fell in love with it. So they can go out and play with kids, when they're old enough, go out there, hey, go play, yeah. Can I go out with Jimmy, whoever it is, yep, go, go do that, ride your bikes around there. And it's small enough, we can do that. And a second phase doesn't bother me, but again, that area up there is concerning, if it's duplex, what's it gonna do to the value of my home? What it brings in, those are all concerns that me and my wife had, and is why we're here.
Okay, got it. All right, who else? I know there's more, yes, ma'am, right here. Just tell us your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Michelle Lindigugel, and I live in the parks, phase one. And I know you've probably heard all of this, but I feel like I need to say it. We are too, my husband and I, we built this home, we saved for it, we worked a very long time for it, we're very proud of it. The traffic on the street, the safety of our kids, the noise, what's going to go down Edinburgh here. We wouldn't have purchased this home in McGregor, we researched it, when I saw the plans, it had a, at that point, it still had a school on it. That's how far back I've seen. Not here to get into any of that, I just, we, I want you to know that we, I believe everybody in our community has worked very hard to own these homes. And we just want to keep our community a great place, so that's all I wanted to say.
We're for that, for sure, so, yes, sir.
Hey Jimmy, Lee Miles.
Hey, Lee, what's going on, man?
Hey, how you doing?
You've been on a pound or two, by the way, so I saw you.
Hey, come on, man. Hey, I wanna say something, and Jimmy and I have been knowing each other a long time. But, you know, we moved to, we moved to McGregor, moved to this area, because it, like everyone is saying, it was a safe, small, homely place and everything. I am extremely concerned, like everybody else, about the apartments and things that they're, they're trying to come here. It's gonna make, to me, very unsafe. All right, cause I mean, there are, I mean, there, I mean, like he said, people coming through that shouldn't be there. We have kids, small kids, that I'm extremely concerned about and everything there as well. So, I mean, if there's anything that can be done to keep us away from all this, man, it'd be greatly appreciated, not just for me, but for all of us. Okay, I mean, so, I mean, it's, I'm from art, those things, I've been there and done that. I don't wanna go back there, I don't want our kids to go back there. I, I, we've been here since, what, October? Honestly, I have not seen a police one time. And that's, that's great, because we're in a great area.
Cause you didn't need them, huh?
We didn't, we don't need, I mean, it's, it's just, it's just, it's, you feel safe when you're out there. And that's what we wanna continue to feel like, you know, be safe. And knowing the other stuff that everybody can't, everybody cannot afford certain things, whatever they're, I mean, I've been in apartments, all those things, I know what it brings, what you have to deal with, you know, parking, unwanted guests, just a bunch of riffraff. And man, I don't wanna go through it again. You know, we are extremely proud, we love each other, we, you know, we speak and everything. I'm concerned about, I mean, I don't want issues with somebody coming down there hitting a kid, doing things, picking up kids, those things. I don't, I don't see it, I don't see any police officers now, which is great, and I just like for it to stay like that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Heather Davis, I'm an Army vet, I just recently moved back to Texas. I was in Hewitt, and then moved to Iowa near family and moved back. I work for the V A, and I work from home. And I was going to buy a house with acreage originally, cause I have, and horses also, but with the economy the way it is right now, and what's available, there just wasn't there. So when this house came available, that I bought over in the phase one, I loved the small community. People are very friendly, I have dogs, I have grandkids that come to see me, and like I say, I'm home a hundred percent of the time right now, cause we're not back in the office yet. And I used to be a police dispatcher in my past, and I know what apartment complexes or multifamily complexes bring. And it's not even so much residents that are there, because they're usually background checked. It's the people they bring in with them that you can't be sure. So I, I just have a real problem with, not so much the phase two, which I didn't realize there was gonna be that many houses, but with the problem with having a multifamily complex of some sort there. So, that's all I gotta say.
So, Mike, before we go any further, if we approve the plat, my concern, cause, look, I, I know that the big area under items four and five has to do with this multifamily, correct? So if we approve the plat, are we automatically then approving? I just don't, make sure we don't get ahead of ourselves.
We're not, we're not automatically approving, we're just approving the preliminary layout of what he's wanting to do. That's all we're doing, this isn't getting filed with the county, this isn't getting filed with anybody, there's no signatures on it. This is just, y'all are approving the preliminary layout of where he's coming out on eighty-four, the number of lots, what he's wanting to do and stuff of that nature, that's all this is.
Yeah, but if we decide to do something different about that big vacant area up there, then-
When the, when the, when the plat, when the actual plat comes, he's gonna, that's a whole nother process. We've gotta come back in through the planning and zoning commission and the council to get the plat approved. You gotta do a final plat, this is-
There's a couple of things on there that I wanna visit, but it had nothing to do with any of this.
Okay.
Things that we're gonna be talking about, but that's how you do this, you kinda let people know what you're thinking, and then they let you know what you're thinking, and then you adjust as best you can.
Okay, all right.
Zoning is the zoning. That's, that's, that's what you gotta deal with.
It's all currently zoned, R seven point two, we did that.
Long time ago.
Long time.
When it came in.
We did it, no, yeah, well, when it came, when we, when it first came in, it was R ten, and then it was requested to go down to R seven point two, and that, just the park subdivision, R seven point two.
Okay, so public hearing on item three is still open, yes, ma'am?
Just to echo and to clarify what you just said, so if you approve this plat, that includes lot one, that can be multifamily?
Well, look, it, it, yes, it preliminarily approves, but it's not final to anything, cause even as the city manager said, if we wanna make changes to it in later items, or even in one-on-one conversation between city manager and developer, when it comes back to us, we can still do a lot of things to it.
So we can legally still make changes that can come back to bite us?
Absolutely, correct? Kevin, correct?
Correct.
There you go, so yes.
If you have a final plat, do it the final plat.
Yep, yes, ma'am.
Is there something we can do to make sure that we get the information in the parks to know that that's coming about? Cause we truly did not have anything.
Yeah, well, we'll make sure to, be checking the website, we'll make sure to publish whether it has to, will that have to go back to planning and zoning?
It'll have to go back to planning and zoning, but every public notice that we do for anything in zoning goes on the city website at least two weeks prior to the date.
So you need to be watching that.
Plus, it's in the McGregor mirror also.
McGregor mirror website, and it's usually posted somewhere out here.
Right outside on the, right outside that door, there's a-
Cause we want all you to be there, I mean, if you wanna be there, we want you to be there. Yes, sir.
So if you're gonna, if, if you vote to approve this as is right now-
Under item three?
Yes, under item three. Can you make amendments to that as it is right here? Like, can you make, can we cut that road out?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I, I wanna hear what else is going on, but I think by the time we get to item four and five, Kevin will know how the council feels, Mike will know how the council feels. Kevin already knows there are some changes he wants to make, and so he will be with the developer, and there'll be time, look, this is the first time the council has seen it like this, so there'll be time for our input before it comes back as a final plat. You will have had another opportunity to see it, and it'll come back to us some later date down the road, so, yeah. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I just have one question, is there any way that we can get like a copy of this plat with street names on it? Cause you say this is this road, and this is that road, and I'm sorry, it confuses me.
I don't think that's available yet, sir.
Yeah, we probably don't even have street names on it.
The only street name we have is Edinburgh.
Edinburgh would be the- Yeah, Edinburgh and eighty-four, and Cotton Belt Parkway, which is way on the other side. So, all right, still striving to stick to item three under the public hearing. Anybody else under item three, and we'll have time to come back on the other ones. Cause there's another public hearing again on item five, so public hearing on item three? Yes, ma'am?
Is there any chance or possibility that you can keep the street, keep our street blocked, stopped, and get a different entrance, a different second entrance?
Are you talking about this Edinburgh issue?
Yes, sir.
And if you're asking if there's a chance, absolutely, there's a chance. I don't know if it really works out, but yes, there's, we're, we're hearing you, I promise you, all of you are hearing what you're saying.
Okay, I appreciate it, I think that's, if nothing else, one of your concerns.
I'm just gonna have to say that the traffic pattern for this is gonna pretty well be set. It really completely disturbs the rest of this property. Can't have one entrance, and there's not really a place to put a second entrance up on that top. But we'll, we'll explore it, but I have to say, if a builder told you it was gonna stay that way, that builder lied, because it has never been designed that way, ever. It's always been designed just exactly like this was done.
So that's a good question there. So Mike, it has to have two-
Fire code requires two entrances, so there has to be two ways in, there has to be two ways in. And, and the whole basis behind that is-
Well, I get it.
I mean, I, I know, just to explain to them, if there's a fire on Cumberland, how are you gonna get out?
Yeah.
You, you can't, and that's why that's designed that way, and that's why the fire code is done like that.
That's a question I could answer.
Well, hang, hang on, cause the other issue I have is I'm, everybody's familiar where the Smith Road Cut, where it comes out up there. And I don't know how you would make another cut in the, I mean, that's a state issue with you, if you're gonna move back further west and make another highway cut, that's probably not gonna happen.
And it, and it creates a lot of timing issues for the developer as well. But I'll also tell you, that piece of ground you're on was the very last piece added, so that he could have an access to Cotton Belt. That piece of ground you're on was bought, so that this subdivision here could get out that direction. We had to annex this piece of property and trade with the city of Waco on E T J in order to have a second entrance and exit.
Cause otherwise, there's just one cut up there on the highway, correct?
The reason you're there is to provide another access to this. And for a builder to tell you differently was just unethical, to say the least.
I noticed some more hands, yes, ma'am?
Can we ask, when you come down Edinburgh right now, there is no cut through. There's a, you know, there's that ravine water passageway there, and so none of that has been done yet. So even if they stopped the, right down towards the bottom there, even if they stopped the road there, you would still have that whole road coming through right to that square, right to the, this part. When it comes up like that, you could still have a plan for a road to cut through there, is that not correct?
Yeah, I don't know that I follow.
Topography and everything else is.
The topography of the layout, the distances involved, all of that would be something for engineers to look at and designers. I mean, you're, you're really, you're really completely changing the design of a subdivision, by what you're talking about doing. Had it been designed to be just you, you would've seen a cul-de-sac on the end of that, or more lots. You wouldn't have seen a road dead end.
Right, that's just what we were all told.
I understand.
So it's becoming a real issue.
I wished I had known it then, because me and a builder or two would've had a very serious conversation.
It's not too late.
I'll be having, I will be having a conversation, I promise you.
All right, yes, ma'am?
Are there, I know I'm getting ahead, but are there plans for more phases going to the left? Another two-hundred, and another down the road with this, the developer or the building?
Yes, yeah, there's more vacant land, there's more vacant land as you come to the west.
So if it's already sold, so something's, it's already in the works?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what's in the works, maybe this gentleman knows this.
There's another seventy-five acres to the west. That was part of this, part of this park's overall concept, was that seventy-five, seventy-eight acres, and there were seventy-five.
And there'll be another entrance on the north side of F eighty-four.
Another entrance?
Yes.
What could that be the entrance if you're already thinking?
It's, it's quarter of a mile down the road on eighty-four. He can't build all that road before he builds houses, he just-
I think, I think the issue here is that eighty-four entrance right there, I'm factoring spacing requirements, I don't meet the requirement for a second entrance to stay right here. Even if it's a right-in, right-out only, I can't do that, cause I don't meet their spacing requirements. And I think that's where the, the Cotton Belt came in.
Correct.
Right, exactly correct.
So, when we design these kind of things, you have to, I mean, I want as many entrances as possible too. And I'd love to say that this wouldn't exist down here, but the fire code reads thirty blocks, two entrances, and you guys have forty-seven. So it's gonna have to be another entrance at some point in time on just that phase one.
How do we get away with it now?
Cause the fire code has changed.
Because the fire code has changed.
The codes change every three years, they, they update the codes every three years.
That's what I was gonna ask, cause there's really only one in and out right now.
When, 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 when the fire code, when the, this whole phase was designed and started, the code that the city was currently on allowed for that load, but now it's been updated, and we went from an oh-nine code to a fifteen code, and that changed, therefore, does-
The road is there.
The road is there.
I think on the plan of the first phase two, they have X amount of lots before it had tied at eighty-four.
Correct, and that was also a text out requirement.
That's right.
Or they would've had to widen Cotton Belt and do all that over there.
Yeah.
Do, do you happen to know what you're gonna be putting on that new seventy-five?
It's gonna be R one, or R seven.
R seven point two.
I'm not an engineer, what is that?
Residential.
Residential, yeah, single fam, single-family residential, my fault.
But that will be another entrance up there, cause I'll meet that spacing requirement.
All right, still a hand, yes, ma'am, you haven't got a chance yet.
You all keep saying Cotton Belt, Cotton Belt's over here, this is Edinburgh.
Yeah, right.
So when they come in in Cotton Belt, they're gonna go all the way down Edinburgh, where they have street racers and all kinds of people. Street shot. This is not safe. This is not safe.
I would just add to that, we do right now with the contractors.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm telling them, I'm making them slow down all the time when they want to do fifty-five miles an hour down the road.
Well, maybe we could put some road curbs in there, speed bumps.
Get some police officers down there.
Okay, listen, anybody else on the public hearing on this matter? There'll be other opportunities, obviously, we got here, and so, look, I, I want to make this general comment, there's a lot of new faces here tonight, which is, I can tell you, some of us have been up here in this council more than twenty years, and we have, I don't want to say fought, because that's not it at all, but we've really pressed hard and encouraged what we see tonight for a long, long time, and that is new faces coming to town, people that want to take an interest in McGregor, people that want to be here, we heard for a long time, ah, people don't want to come to McGregor, you people have proven that just the opposite, people do want to come to McGregor, that's the kind of place we wanted to create, was an atmosphere where people wanted to come and live in McGregor, raise their kids here, go to our schools, be part of our community, be community leaders, sit up on this council table one of these days. So I think we're just all experiencing some growing pains, and we're gonna experience those right along with you, I, I promise you that we all hear what you're saying, we love that y'all are in your, in our town, welcome, this McGregor is yours just like it is ours, and, and we'll try to make good decisions that are not always based on money and not always based on, you know, the developer's pocket, but at the same time, we're grateful that developers want to be out here like this gentleman, that want to come out here and say, hey, I like this place too, and I want to create a place for, for more people like, like you all sitting here with us this evening, so we're gonna hear out everybody and try to make the best decision for the greater good, but, but we hear you and we are, we're grateful that you're here, that's a fact. So, under item four, actually, the public hearing is closed on this matter at seven twenty-six, so we'll go to item four, discussion and possible action regarding the preliminary layout design for the park subdivision phase two. Council, it's our turn now, based on what you've heard, to whether we want to approve the preliminary plat with the understanding that is, that it is exactly that preliminary, with the ability to make changes that might come along in five and six and even well after tonight's meeting between now and even what the planning and zoning might choose to do with it somewhere down the road, so, any other comments?
Will there be, if this preliminary plat is approved, no matter what comes down the road, will there be another public hearing prior to passing?
Yeah.
And it'll also go back to planning and zoning too.
I'm also gonna have Jed do a little work on it with me.
Okay, good.
Well, will this require, at the eighty-four entrance, at the highway eighty-four entrance, will it require some type of stoplight or a, a stop sign?
It's gonna have queuing area, I believe, isn't it correct?
There'll be definitely a stop sign, trying to determine whether it's gonna be a decal lane coming from McGregor, possibly an acceleration lane, or, they have to figure that out based on the total comprehensive plan.
As I've noticed, you know, I, I work in Waco every day, and highway eighty-four is getting busier and busier and busier, and, I mean, especially the eighty-four, highway six interchange or the three forty interchange is a problem right now, and, you know, with all the development that's coming our way, which I think is fantastic, but it's causing some, some major, you know, traffic issues at that interchange.
You know, you'll remember, Steve, you've been driving that way as long as I have, they had to cut off the entrance, the road cut from Twin Rivers.
Yes.
Cut it off.
Yeah.
From something just like this ended up then, that's what led to the overpass.
Right.
And the pass through, and who knows, we may be in that stage one of these days.
Yeah, that overpass was a blessing when they finally got it finished, yeah, I mean, actually, they did it pretty quick.
Yeah.
I thought, but, you know, with the flooding and everything, you couldn't even get through there sometimes.
Yeah. What else? I'd like to get a motion, and then we can talk about it some more, and then we need to move on with some of these other items.
I'll move that we approve the preliminary layout design of the park subdivision phase two.
I'll second that. There's a motion to second on item four, any other questions or comments?
Again, we can change that, we don't have to make this multifamily.
That's the next, that's the next agenda item.
Okay, okay, so right now, this is just the preliminary.
This is just the preliminary layout of the, of the, of the whole subdivision.
Anybody else? Item four? Hearing, no further questions or comments from the council, all in favor of item four, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, ed motion carries. All right, now, let's get to item five, which is to hold a public hearing on an ordinance of the city of McGregor changing the zoning classification for certain properties located within the city limits of McGregor ordinance oh-dash-five-dash-twenty-two, so, again, I know there are a lot of people here to talk about this specifically, I think we all have a pretty good understanding of what's happening, but Mike, go ahead.
Mayor, members of council, the area that you see highlighted, I say that's orange, I don't know if it's orange or black, I really can't see that well, that, that piece of property currently, after speaking with his, the engineer, they want to rezone that to multifamily. The rezone of multifamily does not mean that there are apartments going there or anything, that was made clear at the planning and zoning commission, he did express interest in the look of the townhomes that are down here on eight, uh, Main Street, McGregor Springs on both sides of there, he likes that look and all that, but there was nothing, that the, it was pretty much made clear that apartments do not want to be there at that meeting. The commission, the one thing that was asked was about the height requirement, of course, our zoning ordinance has a height requirement in that section, which is thirty-five foot to the peak, so that's the max height unless they come in and get either a variance or change something else, and that was the only comment that was made on that one.
I think, let him open the public hearing first, Sean.
Yeah, um, okay, so it is seven thirty-two, and we will open the public hearing on item five, and we will start, Mr. Nelson, correct?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, that was originally what tried to do, like a townhome project or some type of, I don't know, duplex project, but, I mean, I also have small kids, you know, I have been there, and it was gonna be gated, I'm not an apartment developer, so it was gonna be for sale, it was never gonna be a rental units or anything like that, they were just like they are down the street, however, I do hear y'all's concerns, and I have no problem with R seven point two.
Correct.
I mean, I don't need to have the apartment complex, that's not what I do, I do the R one stuff, so I'm totally fine, I understand what y'all are saying, I live in a small town also, and I like the small town feel also, so, I mean, just so y'all know, it was just something that I had put in there as a buffer area, and as you'll probably see later on, typically, the area like this, you do commercial, multifamily, then you single family, if it's on a major, major thoroughfare, and so my concern was the buffer area coming off of eighty-four, I don't like those R ones sitting to the back of eighty-four, but I think Mr. Evans and I have discussed some kind of entry or wall along eighty-four to prevent, you know, a car sixty-five, seventy miles an hour passing through there and getting something backyard, which is equally as dangerous as what y'all are talking about too, so, my initial, my initial intent was just to kind of provide a buffer area of that big one-hundred-foot entry feature right there and coming right into a single-family home, so I don't have to do the multifamily, I mean, if y'all's desire is to do the R, leave it R seven point two, I'm totally fine with that, and I'll answer any other questions.
Is R seven point two still residential?
It's a residential lot, yes.
Same thing.
This, this plan right here, that's been in maintenance for probably six or seven years, the rider got a little bit, those lots were really smaller, they were, you know, seventy-two-hundred square foot lots, and they were pinned down, they're pretty close to seventy-two hundred square feet, we have some that are in the sevens or eight-thousand, but most of them probably stay in that ten, nine, ten area, so they're a little bigger lots, so provide a little more room and less density, before it was, I think, two-hundred-and-twenty, two-hundred-and-three lots, and I think it's up to two or nine right now.
Is it possible to use that entrance and kind of do like a Twin Rivers entrance where you have?
We want to make a nice entrance, we want to do a nice entrance feature, you know, we, we understand this is a nice subdivision, once y'all invested in it on the first phase over there, and I understand that, so I don't want to take anything away from that, nor don't want to lower any of these property values or anything like that, so, that's kind of where we're sitting, and I'm totally fine leaving it, you know, I hear, hear these comments, so I want to be sensitive to that too.
Are you withdrawing the?
I can withdraw if y'all.
That's pretty awesome, that's how government works right there, people speak up, you've got good people, that's how it works. That's how it works. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you all for being here on these, on these items, so, look, there's nothing to do under item five or six, Mike?
Since the, since the requester withdrew it, there's nothing to do.
Yeah, so I'm gonna close the public hearing at seven thirty-six, that takes us to item seven, yeah, which is to hold a public hearing on an ordinance of the city of McGregor changing zoning, zoning classification for certain properties located within the city limits of McGregor ordinance oh-dash-six-dash-twenty-two.
Let me get prepared.
So we're in another part of town, we're off Old Caulfield Ranch Road over here.
No, sir, no, sir, no, sir, this is, this is highway eighty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is.
There's no triangle.
Heading out to Bonnie's house.
Correct.
You gotta ask him, yeah, you ask him, he runs me.
Yeah, this is, I, I, we're about to leave, but I, this is not necessarily this, but I just raised on real quick.
Yeah.
Is how not many of these flyers get taken out, but you know, sent out, can we get something, I can get it made, or you could just put a bunch of them right at our exit, and then we can pull it, I mean, because.
Do y'all have a place to put things like that?
That whole thing is empty.
What do you mean, whole thing?
The detention pond, where the mailboxes are, there's a detention pond.
Yeah, like if we can get something built.
We'll just, we'll bring something and put it on your door.
Oh, everybody's door?
Yes, next, next time this comes up.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you.
We'll just take care of that, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Perfect, we got it solved.
Thank you.
Don't thank me, take Jed.
Hey, Lee, it's good to see you.
Good to see you too, sir.
Glad to know you're in town. Hey, I still saw you running about ten-four, so you're the fastest man I've ever seen.
By the look of it, not really, right? I think game gained a pound in forty years. I see that, game still wears its jersey to high school.
All right, so, item seven, the public hearing, Mike, tell us what's going on there.
So, just to kind of give you the familiarity, this is highway eighty-four right here, this is Windsor, the, this is where Brazis Electric Co-op has their distribution station, this is City View, so it's, it's right on the edge of the city limits, the city limits actually comes right here to City View and stops, currently, this property is zoned as medium density, George Eggers owns that piece of property and is requesting that it be rezoned so that he can build storage, storage facility right there, it will contain approximately two-hundred-and-eighty units with RV storage, will be climate-controlled, and in the front along Windsor will be like some commercial-type things, you know, with a garage door and a little side office they can have, so people can have that, but it'll have the proper parking and everything else that's needed for that when that gets there, the other thing is, is he has gotten with text dot on it, they are gonna allow, it will not, the entrance will not be on Windsor, it will actually be right here on eighty-four on this corner, they have approved that, since that is already an entrance, the secondary entrance will be over here, he does, there is a, an easement that runs, a cross-access easement that was done when this was plotted back when Brazis bought a bunch of this back here from Raquel, that runs right along this to, to get back to this barn area and then back over to their facility, so that access, but his secondary access will be here for fire, fire truck entrance and stuff like that, and also an exit, there were no, there was one comment, David Goff did ask about the, how it was gonna affect his, Mr. Goff owns this property back here, and of course, we advised him it wouldn't be infected, he thought it was because of the blue square, the reason we put that blue square around there, that shows y'all that that's the two-hundred-foot radius that we meet, other than that, that was the only comment made on that project.
So what is right next to it?
Where, here?
No, keep going, yeah.
So that's Raquel's old house, that's where Stacy Farrar lives, and then the Tonys live down here, and I don't know who's in the middle here.
What's the, is that a barn or something in the back off the gravel?
Right here.
No, 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 keep going, right there.
That's, that's actually Brazis Electric Co-op's distribution center.
Oh, yeah.
Station that hits the, the transmission line that runs out towards Judith Road, that one that runs along Judith Road, that's the transmission line.
Stacy didn't say anything?
Stacy did say something, we did get a call from Stacy on that, and the reason we got a call from Stacy is she goes, why didn't I get the notice? Because we have to go by the tax records, and when we looked at the tax records, it shows her old address on Van Buren, and that's where the letter was sent.
So she's calling the tax office.
So she's calling the tax office, because that's what we have to go by, I mean.
So what did she say when you talked to her about it?
She talked to Angela, she didn't actually talk to me, she talked to Angela, and I don't know.
She just asked why she got.
Why she didn't get the letter.
She had nothing against or for.
Every city employee is a little bit.
Hey, 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 hey.
All right, so let's open the public hearing then on this item at seven forty-one, public hearing is now open, anybody? All right, the public hearing is closed at seven forty-one.
This is pretty good-looking stuff, I'm assuming this is gonna be a nice.
Yeah, my, my, my question is, what is it gonna look like, because, for example, we got some stuff out here on the highway.
He did say, and I forgot to mention this, he's gonna, you know the rock front that he does with the wrought iron in that, that's what's gonna go in the front on it.
Is it gonna be all filled with gravel in there, though?
To my knowledge, we haven't got those plans yet on it, as you know, in our ordinance, if it's over five acres, you've got to have the first fifty foot in that, but he did say where the commercial sites are on the very front that he's building, that he is gonna put, it'll have concrete like the parking ordinance requires, but we haven't seen the overall plan.
It'll have the concrete.
Oh, he's, more than likely, he's, but.
It'll be concrete or pavement.
But all this is, is, is just this, when the plan comes in of what he's doing, saying that's where the, the.
Yeah, but if we change the zoning and give him the general idea of, yeah, you can do it, do we have any say-so down the road of what he actually?
You do not allow impervious surfaces anymore.
Nope.
You have it for a while.
So, look, George does great work around here, but, you know, would be nice if he covered it, had a fence around it, those big rocks fences he builds or something.
That's what he's planning to do.
He's putting a rock fence in the front, so there'll, there'll be a rock fence between those commercial spaces he's talking about, they kind of have it, he'll have a fence going in between each one of them that block.
With the wrought iron.
With the wrought iron top and all that on top.
Chain link with razor-ridden rail, barbed wire on top of that.
All right, let's go to item eight, because this is where it really happens, so, discussion and possible action regarding approval of ordinance oh-dash-six-dash-twenty-twenty-two in ordinance of the city of McGregor, Texas, changing zoning classification for certain properties located within the city limits of the city of McGregor. So, this is where we really are, then. So what do y'all think, council? We got, yeah, I think you will too, so, it is, it's gotta be concrete by our ordinance, know that.
Impervious.
Anybody have any concerns about it? I mean, it is on the highway, so it's where you put commercial stuff.
I mean, if the closest neighbors didn't really have an objection to nothing.
I mean, if the closest neighbors didn't really have an objection to nothing.
All right, well, I'll just say, just holding to some of those things he does around here that are well done. And that's one of the reasons I don't have as much concern, because we've seen what he's done around here for the last 10 years. He really does it well. Counsel, is there a motion, and we can talk about it some more? There's a motion, a second on item eight. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All is in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. To item nine, is to hold a public hearing on preliminary layout design for a PUD called The Ranch.
So, mayor, members of council, this is kind of the same process of what we went through on the park subdivision. This is just a preliminary layout of what the developers wanted to do. To kind of give you some idea of where everything is at in the layout, Highway 84 runs right through here. This is 5J Dance Hall, Cedar Chest 1, and then.
Clark's.
Yeah, it's in the roof, which is in the old Cedar Chest 2, and then Avelast Construction is right there. So, what is being requested, there's, we're, we have a slide presentation. We're going to see if it works. Basically, what happens is, is this is 84. The first nine, about nine acres is commercial. The second section, which runs from right behind that to this line that you see right here, is the old Cotton Belt Parkway. I mean, the old Cotton Belt Railroad. That, now my battery went out. Oh, there it is. So, this area back here in the back is going to be single-family residential.
So, what's right behind the commercial?
Duplexes.
That whole thing?
This, this whole little area right through here, yes, sir. That's going to be a duplex, and then this will be single-family residential back here. Again, I don't know if this is going to work, because it's not. They did provide a presentation. Walt, if you want to speak from it there, I can bring the mic to you, because I know you're.
You sure?
Okay.
So, is this the new owner developer?
Yeah, this is, so this is Walt Strickland, the same one that did the apartment complex on 84. Right next to Creekside Apartments. You're just going to have to let her know, because she's going to click.
You can go ahead and just roll through it. What we're looking at doing here is taking this 93 acres. We want commercial on the front side of it, and we dedicated the first 250 feet back, which would be approximately nine acres for commercial use, where we're looking at some, hopefully, a hotel. We're looking at a large climate-controlled storage facility that's 43,000 square feet, plus some parking in the area around that. And then we're looking at duplexes. If we could back up one to the, one more. One more again.
I think you were going to go the other way.
Well, I wanted the map, the plan.
Oh, the map.
Sorry. There we go. So, the. Okay. This area is set aside for drainage, which we drew in here, and then this little area here, it's also drainage. We're required to have a detention facility for water runoff. And so, the engineers are working on what that will be exactly like on the final phase, but we went ahead and drew it in there so we could take the land out. The area in the back is single-family home. Our lots are R8, which is 8,500 square feet. And then the residential homes here in the back, the lots are 10,000 square feet, which is an R10. We're really trying to go with a fairly upscale subdivision. The, when you look at the research for the sales, residential sales of McClanick County in the last year, homes in the 300,000 to 400,000 range were the number-one seller in McClanick County. And so, we feel like we can market that here, and, well, I didn't do that. I'm sorry. We, we planned on having buffer areas. You can see the main road coming through. And we actually plan on this, this cul-de-sac and this road. We're planning on those connecting, but we couldn't draw that in until we get our detention plan for the water and know exactly where we'd go. We plan on buffering our commercial area with trees, light fencing, so to speak. We want pretty tree crate myrtles and things like that, and there'll be fenced yards. So, the commercial area will be buffered from the residential area. And then we have the Cotton Belt pathway here that we hope to work with the city on and create a park-like picnic tables and a little trail hiking area across there. It's probably about 1,500 feet. And, you know, so there again, that will be a buffer to your residential area. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'd like to show you the rest of the video. They charge us good money for it. I don't want to.
Yeah, I'd like to see whatever you've got left.
Will it play?
It won't play. I think you can use, I don't think it will, that, that link. I don't think it'll play. You're just going to have to kind of go through the slides.
Can we plug in my.
I don't think it'll go through. Will it, Cassie?
I'm going to try something, so.
Okay.
We, those numbers in answer to your question were estimated tax revenue for each, each piece of property. Of course, with the recent, that was done several weeks ago, so they're not even going to. But we were shooting, we based it on last year's statute.
So, nothing is there currently where you're putting the commercial, correct?
I'm sorry.
Nothing is currently there.
No, there, except that old brick home. Which is.
I stepped out for a minute. Also, that 50 acres that's on the south side of the old railroad right away is got to be annexed. That's in our ETJ. It's not in, let me check.
Yes, we are voluntary requesting annexation for the whole project. When we did our research, these are the factors we based our investment on to just, we like McGregor. We like working in McGregor. It's been a really great atmosphere. People are good to work with. And when we look at, do our research, what we find is there's a lot of people ready to, the school system here is a big girl. And there's a lot of people that are ready to get out of midways, these gigantic schools. And also, you've got a lot of industry here that there's no housing for. When we built the apartments, they, they were 100% full. As soon as we'd see an old building, they were full overnight, and they've maintained that. And so, we feel like that there's a really strong market for some more duplexes. We're not interested in another apartment complex. We do want to do duplexes. And then the single-family homes.
Are you going to be selling the duplexes or renting out the duplexes?
Well, I'm going to build the duplexes, but I, I don't. I, I have customers that want them.
Yeah, that's right.
So, and then we plan on, we, we're hoping to get local builders involved. We're not interested in tri-colleagues coming in.
You still think you can build a home between 325 and 375 right now?
I believe so.
It just seems like that price just keeps going up and up and up.
Well, they do, and I mean, everything's subject to change.
Right.
Is there any other questions?
Did I, did we have the right-of-way reserve on the west side?
Yes, sir.
For Windsor?
May I, can we go back to the plan? Okay, right here. Right here is, right across the street is Windsor. And then right here, in the five-year plan, I believe it is.
It's, the long-range plan has a major collector going up through there.
Yes, sir. They, they want a four-lane road. And so, what we did is we've taken our lots and our property, and we've instructed our design engineer to go ahead and set back 35 feet on those lots. So that when the city gets ready to buy that from us for exorbitant price, we will, we will have the land set aside. We won't have to take people's backyards.
The way that works is you actually donate it, by the way. And also, Baylen, on the other side, Baylen will have to give 35 feet as well, to go right down that line.
And that's supposed to go all the way to wildfire. Just give your bearings.
The wildfire will eventually turn, maybe, depending on what the Text Dot does, maybe go across the blue line. On a side note, Text Dot's initiating a study that will start, start this fall to decide about kind of where to do a spur, quarter spur and a half spur around 84, 84 to 317. And it could involve this, and it might go further out. It might go to Cotton Belt, but we don't know. Either way, this will be a neighborhood collector, at, at the least.
We have done a traffic study with the state, the engineer, and we're being told we will be required on this first piece of the commercial, we will be required to put in a deceleration lane for turning, people turning in. I don't know how that's going to mix with the feeder road that they want to put in there, because I don't see those, that's going to be a conflict. So, we've got to get back with the engineer.
I anticipated that they just took care of that feeder road across, so we'll see. We'll have our conversation.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have to talk with them about it, because he, he was not aware of the, the collector of, the engineer doing the traffic study.
Okay.
Everything's subject to change.
Will you turn it back? Where's the, what is the dotted lines going off to the north and south? What does that represent?
Contours.
Contour?
Talking about, I mean.
That's a drainage contour. There is a, there's a place right, somewhere right in here where there's a culvert coming under 84, and, and they're just showing into the bar ditch, and so they're showing water coming under the highway. We have to account for all of that in our plan.
There's a low spot that cuts east right through there, towards the back half of the property and kind of meanders in the sewer line will eventually be right along that low spot. It'll sewer them and anything else that comes in across. I thought you might call it the Puget Ranch.
Okay, so we're still under the public hearing under nine, so. Public hearing is open at 8 o'clock. Anybody? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed under item nine. That takes us to 10. Discussion of possible action regarding preliminary layout design for PUD called The Ranch. Any questions, council, about anything? What's your timeframe, Mr. Strickland?
I'm sorry?
Timeframe on, I know there's still city things we've got to do, but.
Well, we're, we're working as hard as we can, and one of our first steps is getting approval of our preliminary site. And then we'll be, that way we can sit down with engineers and take bids for water sewer and things like that. Because nobody, nobody wants to give us a bid until we know where, where we're going. And then we also plan on starting the commercial site, the climate-controlled storage buildings. We plan on putting in for permit and everything, get up those plants finalized, and start that immediately, because it'll be its own two-acre little tract.
Is there a motion on item 10?
I make a motion to approve the preliminary layout design for PUD called The Ranch.
Second.
There's a motion, a second on item 10. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All is in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. All right, Mr. Strickland, just going to tell you, when you start building, I don't want all that trash blowing across the road over there. That's my place across the street. So, that south wind's going to have all that trash blowing straight up in my place over there. I'm going to be calling you.
You feel free to call me.
All right.
Sure, get addressed. I can put a dumpster over there if you want.
No, because that means I'm picking it up, and I'm not picking it up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Wow, lots of great things going on here.
Okay, that takes us to 11. Now, hold a public hearing on specific use permit to allow a duplex to be built, more commonly known as 103 Pullen Street, McGregor, Texas.
Mayor, members of council. Trying to find my notes. Hold on. As y'all know, the duplexes, any duplex that comes into the city that wants to be built in a residential area must have a specific use permit. That is where this comes into place. Mr. Gray has requested specific use at 103 Pullen. It's actually two separate lots. The only one that's addressed is 103, because it was actually a substandard structure that was tore down oh, six, seven years ago, something of that nature. She's purchased it and would like to build.
Can you go to the next slide, please?
She would like to build that structure right there, two-story, has a one-car garage in the front of it. Three-bedroom, two-bath. If I'm not mistaken, it was about 1,100 square foot? 1,200 square foot, something of that nature?
Total or each side?
Each side. Because they're two-story, so it thins them down. She's requested that. There was nothing, there was no. There was nothing, there was no... There was no feedback on anything to that, but they recommended approval.
All right, public hearings open under item 11, 8:05. Anybody? Public hearings closed, 8:05. That takes us to item 12. Discussion and possible action regarding approval of specific use permit to allow duplex to be built, more commonly known as 103 Pullen Street.
Is this the property that was bought before us before?
This isn't the one that we turned back?
No, sir. The one you turned back was at 600 Block Pullen. That was at the far end by Seventh Street. This one's actually on the whole other end, across from the church. Kathy, can you go back one please? So, this is Foster, this is Creekside Apartments. This is the railroad, the spur that feeds Perina, and that's Church of the Living God, right across the street.
Okay, is that probably right in the front of that church?
Right in front of that church, it's right in front of it, yes, sir. The behind it, that's that big open lot behind it off of Johnson, but this is the one in front of the, right in front of the church. The other one was the one that was at the other end.
Is that one lot or two lots in there?
It's actually two lots. She's actually wanting to build two of these.
But, I was thinking, but it's the one that was, what I was supposed to, by Seventh Street?
Yes, sir, no, it's completely different.
Anybody on 12? Any issues with this one? Andrew, what do you think? Sure, you bet. Uh, 12.
I move that we approve a specific use permit to allow duplex to be built at 103 Pullen Street.
Second. There's a motion of second on item 12, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries to 13. Hold a public hearing on a specific use permit to allow an Airbnb short-term rental, more commonly known as 1122 West Sixth Street, McGregor, Texas, Windville House.
Mayor, members of council, as you see on the presentation, this is right across from the design of the church. Heidi, our artist, Heidi Foster, bought that residence and are wanting to turn it into an Airbnb. They've provided all the documentation that's needed, and it does, they do have plenty of off-street parking to satisfy the requirement of the ordinance. The only comment that was made was a gentleman by the name of Paul Brown asked about fire sprinklers, and he was informed about state law that we can't require that on a single-family residential.
What's the side street? I'm trying to get my bearings, Mike, on the west side.
This side?
Yeah. Trying to think exactly which house that is.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, this was, no, that ain't Jean's.
Yeah, it was.
Jean's is right here.
That's exactly right.
It's the one next to Jean's.
Yep, yep. They got that half, these are a half-drive through that front yard?
Jeans has the half-drive in the front, right on the corner. And then, this is the one next to it.
Okay.
Yeah, it has parking in the back. You come off the main street, you come off, there's a drive here that comes back, and all this back here, there's enough for three cars back here, plus there's a drive up here, so they're, like I said, they meet the parking requirements.
Yeah. And nobody objected, huh?
The only thing that was brought up was about fire sprinklers.
I'm a little surprised.
Did y'all hear from Mrs. Bass by any chance?
No, sir. And I know a letter, I know a letter was mailed to that, because I remember that address.
She reached out to Chad Miller, that she was confused about. And I told him, I didn't know this was coming up, but this was a couple of weeks ago. I said, "I bet it's about an Airbnb," and so, he was gonna tell, she was just, "I'm confused about some zoning thing or something," and he was gonna tell her what it was.
But no, I didn't hear, I didn't hear anything on that.
Mike, that house also has a certain bit of that.
Yes.
Any staff have any concern with this?
Looking at it and the floor plan and everything that they provided, there was no issue on that.
The Fosters have previously held an Airbnb short-term rental within the city limits, actually on Main Street, it took place over the building. And they're very efficient when it comes to taxes and being in front of anything when they have problems.
Okay. Okay, so, public hearing, 8:11, on item number 13 is open. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, and public hearing is closed at 8:11. Item 14, discussion possible action regarding approval of a specific use permit to allow an Airbnb short-term rental, more commonly known as 1122 West Sixth Street, McGregor, Texas, Windville House. Is there a motion on item 14?
I make a motion that we approve the special use permit to allow an Airbnb short-term lease coming on this 1122 West Sixth Street.
Second. There's a motion of second on item 14, any other questions? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries to 15. Hold a public hearing on specific use permit to allow an Airbnb short-term rental, more commonly known as 909 West Sixth Street, McGregor, Texas, Cottage on Sixth.
This property is owned by the Christian Leos, Frank Leos, on Sixth Street. It's 856 feet from front door to front door, so it's outside the 500-foot radius, 500-foot distance, which is the requirement. There were Vicki Loughlin. Their concern was to make sure that the homeowner was there, or the Airbnb, the manager of the facility, because that one, because there's people always there in and out, and no one's ever there. Ms. Leos did say that she would be, they're living in the back of this residence and renting out the front half of the residence for this Airbnb. Through research in that, it was found that that house actually sits on three lots. So, and the other thing that it doesn't do is the, it doesn't have a all-weather surface as the driving that is required. So, the stip, it was recommended for approval with the stipulation before the specific use permit is issued, that the property is replatted into one lot and that an impervious surface is installed.
Sounds reasonable. But no other objections about, "No, don't do this," huh?
No, sir.
Yeah, it was, it used to be Frank's house. Where does he live now?
Going fourth.
Okay, so, under item 15, public hearings open at 8:14. Anybody? Public hearings closed at 8:14. Item 16, discussion possible action regarding approval of specific use permit to allow an Airbnb short-term rental, more commonly known as 909 Sixth Street, McGregor, Texas. Is there a motion, and if there is, I would recommend to include those contingencies.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve the specific use permit to allow an Airbnb short-term rental, more commonly known as 909 West Ninth, in McGregor, oh, six, sorry, six, with the stipulations of a...
Replat and...
A replat.
All-weather surface.
And all-weather surface.
There's a motion of second on item 16. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Seventeen, hold a public hearing on preliminary layout design for a PUD from McGregor Springs LLC off Morris Street.
Mayor, members of council, if y'all remember last council meeting, the one before, we rezoned this whole section down here. This is the Rachel Commons Apartments. This is Little Avenue, Rachel Road. Again, Mr. Eggers is the one that bought this with McGregor Springs LLC. He wanted to do the same thing, as you can see, build the townhomes. They will all be single-story, and there will be no two-story structures within that little complex. Has a little dog park in the front, little picnic area. Has two entrances, that was one thing, is was there gonna be two entrances? And as you can see, there is, for fire department access. Water and sewer is there, he has to put all the water and sewer inside on property there. And there is, this is, back here is the old, where Pump Morris's, what we call Morris Apartments, or, if I'm not mistaken, it's four units, possibly five. The plan is, is that this road that is in there will continue and tie into this section of road that's in there. This is the only section that's not in. So, this road will actually continue on through here, stop with a lot of the people just driving wherever. There was no, there was no comments or anything on that issue, it was recommended for approval.
And who's the developer?
George Eggers with McGregor Springs LLC. It'll kind of be the same if you go out, the single-story ones that are over here on the left, on the left-hand side, the old EMS property, those, and then the single stories that are at the other end that he's building there, it's gonna look kind of like the same design in there.
So, he's gonna have a five-unit, a four-unit, and two six units, townhomes?
Si, two sixes and two fives.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-two units total.
So, I miscounted that?
He'll have, so this is a six unit?
They're not duplexes.
Yeah, it's, so each, each one of these, this will still have to come back to y'all, because he's gonna replat each one of these. So, each one of these will be sold, these aren't his rentals. He's actually gonna sell them, just like he did McGregor Springs, Phase One, Phase Two, New Windsor Place, he doesn't keep these, he actually sells them. So, it'll come back to you, once this is approved, prelim, this is the approval of this PUD, then he'll start, come back in, and it'll come back to y'all for the replat of each one of these. There'll be a 10-foot lot line. There is a gas utility easement that runs right through here, as you can see where this fence line runs. These, you can build over it with a fence, you just can't put a structure in it. His property borders there, there will be a privacy fence that runs along this backside to block these from one another, and go from there.
You know what, the road is already going into where those old...
Morris Court.
Morris, well, okay, so, that road today, right there between that, you know, going like, coming to Rachel Commons. So, I'm saying, they're connecting it.
They're gonna connect, yeah, this, this little, so this road piece is in. These people have been right, just right down, straight to theirs, but this is gonna be curbed. There will be curving on this side of the street and the other side of the street, and give this a defined entrance.
We will rebuild that half-block that's been sitting there rotten forever. It's been a basically private drive for the two people on either side of it, had cars on blocks on it whenever I moved here. But we'll open that back up and rebuild it, and then he's gonna tie onto that with curbing gutter and go around.
Okay, 8:19, public hearing is open. Anybody? 8:19, public hearing is closed to item 18. Discussion possible action regarding approval of preliminary layout design for PUD McGregor Springs LLC off Morris Street. Is there a motion?
I make a motion we approve the preliminary layout design of PUD McGregor Springs LLC off Morris Street.
Second. There's a motion of second on item 18, any other questions? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries to 19. Hold a public hearing for replat on a .689 acre tract situated in the J. Elliott Lilly Survey, abstract number 542, McLennan County, Texas, being all of lots 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, Block 95, the original town of McGregor. McLennan County, Texas, of record in volume 41, page 168, deed records of McLennan County, Texas, .689 acre, situated in the J. Elliott Lilly Survey, abstract number 542, McLennan County, Texas, being all of lots 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, Block 95, the original town of McGregor, McLennan County, Texas, of record in volume 41, 168, deed records of McLennan County Victory Chapel.
Mayor, members of council, usually this would be done administratively in-house, because, but when we pass a new ordinance, if it's five or more lots, it has to come before the planning is done again. Y'all, there are no issues with this, these are existing structures that are on there. There's a, the church itself, and you can faintly see it, and the outline is right here, it's like a horseshoe shape. And then, this is, I don't know if that was the fellowship hall.
It's a middle building.
Just a middle building right now, and so, basically, what the church is doing is trying to clean everything up. Pastor Curtis come and told them, you know, there's, just trying to clean it up, there might be entrance, interest of that, someone wanting that building later, and so, it was just an easier fix to get it all cleaned up. And that's what they're doing here, because the church does cross over three different properties, so that was kind of fixing everything. There was no objection to what is being requested.
Okay, then under 19, the public hearing is open at 8:21. Public hearings closed at 8:21, that takes us to 20. Discussion possible action regarding approval of replat, .689 acre tract situated in the J. Elliott Lilly Survey, abstract number 542, McLennan County, Texas, being all of lots 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, Block 95, the original town of McGregor, McLennan County, of record in volume 41, page 168, deed records of McLennan County, Texas, the .689 acre situated in the J. Elliott Lilly Survey, abstract number 542, McLennan County, Texas, being all of lots 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, Block 95, the original town of McGregor, McLennan County, Texas, of record in volume 41, page 168, deed records of McLennan County. Is there a motion on 20, just by simply naming the replat of the .689 acre tract as stated?
I make a motion to approve the replat on the .689 acre tract.
There's a motion of second on item 20, any other questions?
Are you sure we don't need to read it again?
Any other questions? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. That takes us to 21, which is to hold a public hearing on replat of .248 acres of land in the city of McGregor, McLennan County, Texas, being lots 4 and 5, Block 54, the original town of McGregor, as per plat recorded in volume 41, page 168, the deed records of McLennan County, Texas.
Mayor, members of council, as you see, this is Washington Avenue, right here. Over here is the exchange, kind of just north of all that, past the automotive shop, I mean, the motor stock shop, Encore Substation, or what's left of it, that's currently there. The request is, as you can see, a lot of the lots that were back in McGregor, original town, right around the railroad, were only 30-foot wide. So, what this request is being is, they're gonna combine, there's three lots, they wanna take them, they're requesting it to be 45-foot wide, which is five foot smaller than what the ordinance says it is, or the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance is. And so, that's what they're requesting, so they could go two single-family homes there. There were no objections, and there were no comments on that item, and it was recommended for approval.
All right, under item 21, at 8:24, public hearing is open, anybody? Public hearing is closed to 22. Discussion possible action regarding approval of replat, .2488 acres of land in the city of McGregor, McLennan County, Texas, being lots 4 and 5, Lot 54, the original town of McGregor, as per plat recorded in volume 41, page 168. Point two four eight eight acres of land in the city of McGregor, McClintock County, Texas, being lots four and five, block fifty-four, the original town of McGregor, as per plat recorded in volume forty-one, page one sixty-eight. The deed records of McClintock County, Texas, is there a motion on item twenty-two per replat and acres?
I make a motion we approve the replat of the two point four eight acres of land in the city of McGregor.
Second. This motion is second on item twenty-two, any other questions or comments?
Mayor, is that where the motorcycle shop, dang it?
It's across the street.
So what, about the, beside the...
So when you turn off of Fifth Street, and you turn on Washington, like you're going to the exchange, it's on the left-hand side, just after the house that's owned by one eater beneath us. It's between it and the guy on the corner.
Where, uh, what was his name? He should be the city, uh, not, uh, Emmera, is it behind that house? Uh, it's a little, for a hundred years here. What's his name?
Joseph?
No, Joseph lived on...
No, no, I'm talking about, uh, but you know where, uh, those, the house right there, corner?
Yeah, the, the older guy...
In between that?
Yeah, it's the lots in between that, there was a substandard house there that we tore down. Jerry Don Smith tore it down, right there next to that lot. This lot, there was a substandard house right here that was torn down, so it's the next lot, and then this guy has the big garage back here that faces the exchange.
Okay.
Now, you know what I'm talking about, the, the house actually faces this way, the old water tower used to be right here. The big water tower that we took down, it used to be right here in this corner, so it's catty corner for that.
We got a motion and a second, are there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, no. That motion carries to twenty-three. Hold a public hearing on a plat of point two one acres of land in the E.G. Phipps survey, abstract number seven fourteen, the city of McGregor. McClintock County, Texas, being that parcel of land described in a deed to Julio Cruz Jr. of record in, as instrument, two thousand twenty-one zero three nine eight four zero, and the official public records of McClintock County, Texas, said parcel being known as lot B nine, block three, of the Joseph Hale addition, an unrecorded plat of McGregor, Texas.
That's why this one's coming to y'all, everything, the last three blocks of the east side, the Joseph Hale subdivision, it was presented, but it was never recorded with the county. So Pullen, Rogers, Johnson, all those lots are just, they're there, but it's, it's an unrecorded plat, it was never recorded with the county. So therefore, when somebody comes, so this one is actually, so as you can see, East Second, Johnson runs, ties into it right here. This back here is where the telephone towers are, that's right over there on the far, far east side. This gentleman, Mr. Cruz, and actually, I've been dealing with John McLaren on it, it's one of his, his workers, and he's, they're replating it, 'cause he's gonna put his house right here on this, he's actually wanting to put a modular home.
Is it zoned for modular homes?
Yes, those, those three streets on that side are in the mobile home district, modular home district, mobile home district.
I was just wondering if they even allowed them.
Cause it's from, isn't it from Rogers back?
Yeah, Rogers back, from the, the, the east side of Rogers, all the way back to Johnson.
Huh, I just had forgotten that.
That is the only, that is the only, that is the one of two sections in town that they're allowed.
Okay, under item twenty-three, the public hearing is open. Anybody? Hearing none, at eight twenty-eight, the public hearing is closed, that takes us to twenty-four, discussion possible action regarding approval of a plat. Point two one acres of land in the E.G. Phipps survey, abstract number seven fourteen, the city of McGregor, McClintock County, Texas, being that parcel of land described in a deed to Julio Cruz Jr. of record as instrument. Two thousand twenty-one zero three nine eight four zero, and the official public records of McClintock County, Texas, said parcel being known as lot B nine, block three, the Joseph Hale addition, an unrecorded plat of McGregor, Texas. Is there a motion under item twenty-four by the plat and the acres?
I make a motion.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm going to approve a plat of oh point twenty-one acres of land in the E.G. Phipps survey.
Yeah, that'll get it. Second. There's a motion, a second on item twenty-four, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries to item twenty-five, hold a public hearing on a replat of point three two eight eight acre tract of land. Located in the city of McGregor, McClintock County, Texas, being all of lots twelve and thirteen, block seventy-four, the original town of McGregor, according to the plat thereof, recording in McClintock County Clerk's document. Two thousand eighteen zero three six six one three, the official public records of McClintock County, Texas, and all of the twenty-three feet wide, point zero five three acre South Adams Avenue right-of-way abandonment tract described in ordinance zero sixteen nineteen. And recorded in McClintock County deed records, two thousand nineteen zero three five four nine nine, and official public records of McClintock County, Texas. Being point three two eight acre tract, being more particularly described and shown hereon, and further described by meets and bounds.
Mayor, members of council, this piece of property is on North Van Buren, and it says Hall Street, that's what it used to be called a long time ago. But it's the old Cortez House. The old brick, brick house that has the, it had a fire, or had some structures, concrete kind of left...
Is it still up?
It's still up, barely, but it's still up.
We gonna get it down?
That's what this is about. The person that, Armando Avalas purchased the property, it is, he does own it, he's wanting to tear that structure completely down, all the concrete, or everything out. Replat the property, and build three single-family homes here that face North Van Buren, and then two up here that face, which is?
Second Street?
Yes, Second Street, North Second. These three lots back here, there's not a big issue, they're one twenty by fifty, which beats the zoning requirements and the classifications for those size lots. The issue comes in, and it's not, I mean, it's an issue, but it was actually recommended for approval. These two lots right here, there, as you can see, there is a sixty-foot right-of-way running through there. As you, as you know, in a lot of parts of town, we have extensive right-of-ways, eighty-foot, sixty-foot, they're, they're pretty large right-of-ways. Mr. Avalas is requesting that these two lots be approved, they're sixty by seventy-eight, almost eighty-foot deep. The issue is, is we have a sewer line that runs in the back of them, so they can't build on that, so there's a utility easement that runs through there to a manhole right here. They're asking for a twenty-foot, instead of a twenty-five-foot front yard setback, a twenty-foot front yard setback, which is still fifteen foot from the edge of the road. So there's actually thirty-five foot from the front of their structure to the edge of the road. They, that will give them enough room to build a single-family structure on that lot, that meets the minimum requirements. And again, city staff has been there with this sewer line, trying to figure out that issue. Mr. Avalas did build a duplex right here, but there will be no duplexes here, they are all single-family residential, and it was recommended for approval with the twenty-foot front yard setback on North Second on lots four and five. But the twenty-five foot would still remain on lots one, two, and three. Give you some, this right here is the old Cotton Belt Railway, which is now a drainage channel that runs right through here.
Mike, what's on the backside of all those lots?
This right here?
Yes.
Uh, Cortez owns it, and there's a bunch of modular homes right here that run up and down Harrison, that have been there forever.
Anything facing that side?
This side here?
Uh, the street, yeah.
No, sir, there was a structure here, Susie Hernandez's home place burnt down back in twenty-eleven-ish.
Wasn't there a pile of rocks or something over there?
There was a pile of rocks, but all that's been cleaned up, everything's, all that's here now is there's a bunch of modular homes right through here.
On the other side, is there anything facing Second?
There's one house that's facing it right here, if I'm not mistaken, and then there's one on the corner. Other than that, the house that's right here actually faces Van Buren on this corner.
What I'm getting to is, aside from this, I think this is a good project, I wanna go look at that street, see if we can peel ten foot off each side. You just got to get rid of some of these right-of-way acres, it's just insane. And that, that may be a pretty good candidate for it.
So how big are those lots, I mean, those big enough to put houses on?
According to Bert, I'll let Bert, who's our superintendent, I'll let him speak on the size of those structures under there.
Yes, we planned on lot four and five, the houses would be anywhere from twelve fifty to thirteen hundred, on up to fifteen hundred square feet. They won't be as deep, 'cause we don't have the depth, but we can make them wider on that sixty-foot lot, 'cause we can go within five feet of the lines. So we can get the length versus the depth in the house and get footage. And, and I know Mr. Avalas has talked to the owners of the trailer houses around behind there, he knows them personally. So I know that he's already talked with them, so that if they ever in the future wanna sell any part of that, or their trailers or anything, I think he's probably got first-choice advantage for future development of, of carrying on.
Okay, eight thirty-five, the public hearing is open, anybody? Eight thirty-five, the public hearing is closed. That takes us to item twenty-six, which is related, and that is the discussion possible action regarding approval of replat of point three two eight eight acre tract of land located in St. McGregor, McClintock County, Texas, being all of lots twelve and thirteen, block seventy-four. The original town of McGregor, according to the plat thereof, recording in McClintock County Clerk's document, two thousand eighteen zero three six six one three, of the official public records of McClintock County, Texas. And all the twenty-three feet wide, point zero five three acre South Adams Avenue right-of-way abandonment tract described in ordinance zero sixteen nineteen. And recorded in McClintock County deed records, two thousand nineteen zero three five four nine nine, the official public records of McClintock County, Texas, being point three two eight eight acre tract. Being more particularly shown hereon, and further described by meets and bounds. Is there a motion under item twenty-six by reference to the replat and the acreage?
I make a motion we re, we approve the replat of three, of point three two eight acres of tract of land.
Next second.
There's a motion, a second on item twenty-six, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries to item twenty-seven, discussion possible action regarding approval of interlocal agreement between the city of McGregor and McClintock County to improve Judith Road to serve the industrial park.
Uh, we've been working on this a while. Jed Walker worked with Ben Perry in the county, and we have come to a spot where we can work together and get that first piece of Judith for Canoff Industries built. From Motherneff Road north to the north entrance for the Canoff facility. This is what we need to do in order to loop the county into that effort and then move forward. Makes it a little quicker to do and a little more affordable.
So this is something we, the county originally did not agree to do, but we've kind of...
You talked them into it, mayor.
Yeah.
Over, over two or three visits.
A couple of us, you too.
But it's, it's very important, and it's really the only way we're gonna get that road built fast enough, given to the environment we have right now with bidding things out. We'll still be bidding out some of the overlay and some of the work, but we're gonna haul the stuff or pay to have it hauled, and they're gonna compact it and get it groomed up, ready to go, and put in the concrete for the, the drainage and so forth. So it's a, it's a, a Jed Walker plan that's gonna work real well, I think. But we got their signed copies today, so you'll be, if you approve this, you'll be signing it, and they'll get busy probably next week.
And as you can see, the county is providing up to five hundred thousand dollars, so that was a big deal. Yeah, yeah, so it's a big deal, and again, you can thank really Ben Perry, I mean, he's our county commissioner, and he does a really good job for us, he...
Him and Scott both worked real hard on this with the rest of the commission.
Yeah, yeah, Judge Felton did too, for sure.
Okay, so is there a motion on item twenty-seven to get this thing signed?
I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between city of McGregor and McClintock County to improve Judith Road to serve the industrial park.
Second. This motion is second on item twenty-seven, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries to twenty-eight, discussion possible action of resolution R dash seven dash twenty twenty-two, resolution of the city council, city of McGregor, Texas, selecting an elected official of the city as the city's nominee for service as a member of the governing body of McClintock County Rural Transit District.
This was Frank Lass's position on that group, just hadn't been replaced yet, and one of yous needs to jump on there. And I might add that they're gonna be doing some pretty serious reevaluation of the transit system here pretty quickly. That's something that's in the works, and I'm not sure how this group will work with that, but I know they'll be involved.
So when you say transit, that just has, has to do with what kind of public transportation runs to and from?
Bus service, yours is a little different in that it's been rerouted out here primarily originally for C three. But you'll still see them around, they just don't have much ridership right now, but it's also kind of a, an on-call service at the same time, you can kind of get both services out of it. But we have a position on that board, this was put together whenever Scott Felton first got elected, he felt like the money that they got wasn't being used much in McClintock County, it was being used in the other counties in the surrounding area, because it goes out that far. And he made sure that it got redistributed and did a little bit more in McClintock County, and we had a seat on that board.
That's the one I've been feeling, right?
Think so.
So Stephen's been on it?
Uh, I think so, I don't know that they've met much, but...
Once a quarter.
I think he was the one that was put on there.
The last two meetings have been in person.
Do we, so we need to put someone in addition to Stephen on it? Put Stephen back on it?
Well, that's up to y'all, I, I think Stephen's done a fine job.
I think it's probably up to Stephen.
I don't get a vote.
I don't, I don't mind, it's, it's once a quarter, it's, uh, over there at the courthouse, easy for me to get to.
Good, great.
They do it on like Thursday afternoon, four o'clock or something like that.
Is there a motion to appoint?
I make a motion we put Stephen back to the board of...
There you go.
I second that note.
All right, great. Sunder item twenty-eight, all in favor to reappoint Stephen Nutchman as our transit representative under resolution R dash seven dash twenty-two, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries.
That sounded more like a train whistle than a whistle.
Discussion possible action regarding approval to cancel a portion of the city McGregor general election, being that, being that the position of mayor was unopposed, is there a motion to cancel a piece of the election?
I make a motion we cancel a portion of the, of the city elect, general election, so because your position was unopposed.
Second. Motion is second on item twenty-nine, any other questions?
That was easy.
Yep, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries to thirty, discussion possible action regarding approval of the contract for election services between the McClintock County Election Administration Department and city of McGregor for the May seventh, twenty twenty-two joint election. Andrew, anything to provide here?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
So they bring all their equipment out?
Yes, and now, now people are going with him, it's even cheaper.
And they'll bring it to our normal polling locations, which I guess is just still junior, right?
It's an election day, on election day.
Okay.
That's a seven.
All right, is there a motion to...
I make a motion we approve the contract for the election services between the greater city election administration department and the city of McGregor, the McClintock County election administration department and the city of McGregor.
Second. This motion is second on item thirty, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries to thirty-one, announcement of special call meeting to be held on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. What's the announcement?
Oh, we gotta do the audit, need to have that meeting, and we're gonna add, what'd we decide today?
Street.
Yeah, street report will be on that today.
And financial report, us and monthly financials.
And your auditor will be here to answer your questions and give the report.
Okay. Okay.
That's Monday.
No, that's just a week away.
It's just a week away.
Yes, yes, it's just a week.
Monday, Monday.
So, I'll have it.
Is that tax day?
It is.
Yes.
All right, so same time?
So, I'll be posting the agenda on the fourteenth since it's a, uh, Friday, it's a holiday, it's a Friday. And so, you'll, you'll get your papers.
Five, six thirty, I mean, same serving? All right, uh... That takes us to item thirty-two. Closed bidding pursuant to chapter five fifty-one Texas government code in accordance with the authority contained in section five fifty-one oh seventy-one legal, oh seventy-two real estate, oh seventy-four personnel, and, uh, point zero eighty-seven economic development, I'm assuming Kevin, we're going under...
Economic development.
Economic development, that would be Texas government code, section five fifty-one oh eighty-seven, discussion regarding economic development negotiations including commercial, financial information received from a business prospect, seeking to locate, stay, or expand near the city of McGregor to discuss economic development negotiations and/or to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect. So, at this time, it is eight forty-six, we will stand in recess off, um, open record and be going into closed session. We'll be back as soon as possible to finish up the meeting.
I have nothing to add, sir.
All right. Council under thirty-four, anything from the council you've not heard tonight? If you have something, bring it to Kevin personally and get it addressed. That takes us to thirty-five, it's nine forty-three.
I just kind of like to mention something. Uh, the cleanup thing. I definitely like to thank the people that helped. You know, I know the trailer and trucks and all of that. You know, Jimmy, if you remember when you got on and I got on, one thing we had talked about really was about cleaning up the city. And you know, I was wondering, I was going to mention, I see about, you know, one, I don't know how long it was or whatever, but the timeframe before what we have, how for us taking out stuff to dump. You know, there is, it was eight to twelve, I think it was. Am I right?
Until, until it was full. Are you talking about on Saturday?
It said in the paper, it said eight to noon, so. you know, there is, it was, what, eight to twelve, I think, was it? Am I right?
Until, until it was full. Are you talking about on Saturday?
No, it said in the paper, well, I'm talking about, it said eight to noon, so, so that's what I'm saying.
Of course, you just get the trash out then.
Yeah, yeah, that was about, so I was, I was wondering if we, why would that change or why, you know, I think it needs to be longer because, uh, a lot of people, you know, for whatever reason, sometime where you maybe have to, a lot of people load, you know, I know I did, and some of them, you know, load like Friday night and get up Saturday morning so they can go up there, but then a lot of people don't get up, you know, at early Saturday morning. And so you get up at nine or nine-thirty loading up, putting their twelve o'clock. So I was wondering, and then I have saw with those dumpsters, when it was over, we were by, they say, said that we had them there and several of them wasn't even plump full. So, you know, it's kind of waste of where if we got them and we're not using, you know, what's the purpose of having them if we're not going to get people time enough to bring the stuff to put in them? So I was just wondering if we could help.
What's in the yard? Would you have to talk? I think the reason that it was cut back is we ran it a year and nobody came after one block.
Well, I mean, I, I, that's what I'm asking. I understood it, but then, you know, I'm just saying, but I saw two, you know, people that had pulled up there, we're going and it was closed, you know, it was cut off. And then I notice now it was only, I think it's eight to, I think it said eight to twelve, eight to noon, is what he said. But the guy did a great job for it because all he had to do was pull up there and unload his stuff, you know.
I'll ask him and we'll see what we can do next year.
Yeah, I just, I just think that'd be, because I think it's a lot of, you know, that helps a lot for getting rid of a lot of stuff that is laying around or people just throwing in the city and, you know. But I think sometimes if it was where they, some of them may be where they didn't get rid of, so they just did dump it, you know, related to the side or something. So maybe we could just extend that a little, a little longer. That's all I have.
All right. I had something about, I don't know how much our fire department, I would imagine they're pretty busy with those fires and, I don't know, did they respond to flat and mound and the one out there off of three seventeen, all those, those fires we had a couple of weeks ago?
So we helped with...
So Bossy, we assisted with a fire in Bell County. We sent two units and guys down. And then the same kind of time period where the stuff was flat and the stuff in Bell County all related to kind of Fort Hood, we had a fairly large one, about a hundred and thirty acres at Stein Camp Road between here and Crawford. That was, we were there, I don't know, about eight hours on that one.
I appreciate y'all doing, I mean, I know that's, that's what you do, but, I mean, it got, it got pretty serious pretty quick there. And, uh, I know a lot of my kinfolk, you know, were really worried because some of them got evacuated. You know, they weren't, they weren't too sure what was going to happen. Had to get all their animals out.
Hopefully they won't do artillery practice on a no-burn day again.
Yeah, but it's so dry. Any little thing, I mean, the one on eighty-four the other day, well, some kind of big piece of equipment popped up.
Dropped its tire.
Yeah. And, uh, so it doesn't take anything, just a little, little sparking, that's it.
Nope. So low humidity and the high winds are the biggest factors for us. We could use about a week's worth of rain. But we do have another brush truck. The LMTV is in service now. So we actually, instead of three brush trucks, we have four.
Okay. Well, thanks. I appreciate that.
Thanks for your service.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody? Very well. This meeting's adjourned. Nine forty-nine. Thank you, everybody. We've had a lot done tonight.